I think many of you know Vice President of the Board of Trustees and President Reese has asked me to begin the meeting this evening until she gets settled and in front of a stable internet connection. So, welcome to the Peralta Community College Board. Let's see, I think the first thing that we have is roll call.
Student trustee Yuroni. Trustee Withrow. Trustee Jenkins.
Here.
Trustee Handy.
Here.
Trustee Delphin Polk.
Here.
Trustee Bonia.
Absent.
Trustee Gonzalez Yuan.
I'm right here.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarys. You have a form.
Thank you so much. And Dr. Jackson, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Okay. Jackson, I don't know if you know, but I think you might be muted there.
Okay, I was muted. I'm standing up, so I apologize if I'm kind of cut off, but if you would repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States America and to
and to the Republic.
For which it stands. One nation
one nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all. Thank you so much. As has become now our custom, we wanted to open up board meeting with a recounting of the board's statement of cooperation, which we came to in an effort to improve working relationships within the district. And so I'm just going to read this as a reminder. "The board is continuing to work on trust in and among our members. We agree to listen to and to seek to understand others and opposing viewpoints with the expectation of good intention and a deep commitment to the district's students. We commit to being prepared for each meeting and to work within our established communication protocols when we seek additional information. Members will review the agenda in advance of each meeting and adhere to policy, Board Policy 2340, for adding items to the agenda. We've reviewed the board's code of ethics and commit to reviewing it annually at our organizational meeting to remind ourselves of the behavior that we are to exhibit and the guidelines we're to follow in our role. If the code of ethics is violated, we commit to following the process stated in the code and will first address concerns informally to settle disagreements one-on-one between and among members before moving to the formal process. We agree that from time to time, the chair will remind members of appropriate behavior and may call for recess or to redirect members if they stray from the topic of discussion. We collectively recognize that it is within the duties and the authority of the chair to render decisions or take actions to keep our meetings on track and adherence to board policy. We will strive to fulfill the vision we established for ourselves and we will model the behavior we want others to exhibit." And this was signed by all members of the board, and we do that at the beginning of every meeting. I believe we have one report from closed session, and I'm just going to read that out. In closed session tonight, the board voted on the following item, the recommendation to appoint to extend the appointment of Marla Williams as the interim executive director of Fiscal Services in the district office, effective July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022, with an annual salary of $172,931. That position reports to the Vice Chancellor of Finance and Administration. It was made on a motion by trustee Bonia, seconded by trustee Withrow, and was a unanimous vote with seven ayes, no abstentions, and no opposition. That is our closed session readout. See, now we move to the approval of the agenda, and I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
A move.
Motion by trustee Jenkins. Is there a second? It's not that complicated or controversial, I suspect.
A second. This is Deanna.
Thank you, trustee Delphin Polk. It was a brave day, but she did it. Thank you.
I did. Thank you.
Great. I think we need a roll call vote.
Student trustee Yuroni. Absent. Trustee Withrow. Trustee Withrow.
Here.
There you go. Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphin Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Yuan.
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarys. Oh, trustee Bonia, my apologies.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. So we have approved the agenda, and next is the approval of the minutes from May 25. Do I hear a motion?
A move.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Withrow and trustee Jenkins. Can we have a roll call?
Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphin Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Bonia.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Yuan.
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarys. Absent.
Okay, not back in the room yet. Thank you. I think the motion passes. And so now we move into classified senate report. Is President Fisher here? Thank you, President Fisher.
Good evening, everyone.
Could you see if you could turn your volume up for us a bit? Or move your mic? Does anybody else have any trouble with that? Still a little bit distorted.
Okay. What I wanted to say was, it's usually protocol for the associated students to go before the classified senate. I'll be more than happy to go get my report.
I'm fine with reordering the agenda at the pleasure of the board. Why don't we go to associated student government reports? Sasha, do we have student government leaders with us today?
I can see any in the attendees' room.
Okay, if, in fact, student government leaders show up, why don't you let me know, and we'll move to President Moore, the academic senate, and then circle back around to classified senate report. President Moore.
Good evening. Vice President, you and members of the board, the president, interim chancellor. As you know, we're all in summer recess right now, except for those faculty who are probably still teaching over at College of Alameda. I wanted to wish everybody enjoyable summer, if you're not going to be teaching summer session, and to have a nice extended vacation. One of the issues that I wanted to bring up again to address, we had addressed this earlier when there was a revision of board policy in terms of the chancellor's search, but throughout this process where we were going for a new chancellor, what we didn't do was to arrange any time for even a virtual visit to whoever the final pick was of the board. And while I know that they, that you then have to go through negotiations and contact and with the consultants and the vice chancellor, the whole point of that is to do the due diligence and the due process of making sure that through your participatory governance process, you are really doing what is needed in terms of trying to ensure that the senate, the academic senate, the classified senate, the associated students, and even our unions have an opportunity of contacting the respective institution that the, that the potential chancellor is coming from, so that way we can have a good conversation with those individuals. We have done it in the past, and I hope we will in the future do face-to-face ones, but in light of COVID, we should have been able to do a a process of a virtual one, or even a telephone contact, but I have not been offered any of those. And the concern of the senate has been expressed during the time we were revising, when it was up for board approval on the revision of that board policy, but again, nothing has been done, and it's very, very disheartening and very, very disappointing because, again, our voices have been denied. And you may think that forums for the vice, for the chancellor was adequate. It really comes down to how did these individuals act and behave, not in the interview process, not in the forum process, but what they experienced and did at their individual institutions, and that has been denied to us. And so I really, really want to challenge the board that they really need to make sure that they do their utmost to have that kind of inclusivity, regardless of what the consultant said about their process of vetting these candidates. We, as the senate, have not had that opportunity, so I take very, I take exception to that and want to go on the record for that today. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, President Moore, for the reminder about board policy, and I'll just say, without going into detail, that the board has every intention of complying with board policy. Thank you so much, though. If we can circle back around to our classified senate report, President Fisher, are you now ready?
Yes, I am.
All right, you're on, sir.
Okay. Good evening, President Reese, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Jackson, presidents and guests. Tonight, we have one classified senate campus report. This report comes from the Berkeley City College Classified Senate. With the governor now postponing the opening of the state on June 15, more questions and concerns are arising regarding our return to campus. BCC classified professionals know that things will be handled in the best interest of the employees and students and are looking forward to working with our return to campus team at BCC. Senate officer elections are currently underway. An announcement of the new officers will be made tomorrow, Wednesday, June 9th, at our BCC classified senate meeting. Lastly, the senate is planning a professional development retreat in July to 2021. And we are wait, they are waiting for the new senate offices to be in place before a decision is made on what the retreat will encompass. On a point of personal privilege, I want to speak on the matter of classified employees returning to work. As of June 8th, California has 3,691,660 confirmed cases of COVID-19. And there have been 62,479 deaths. Classifieds are still worried about returning to their work sites. To date, Peralta College campuses and district office facilities are closed through July 31st. Some colleges have assembled task forces looking into what changes may need to take place when we do return to campus. The Peralta Classified Senate strongly encourages the district to work with the classified unions to come up with return to work protocols, procedures and policies, including social distancing, masks and plastic barriers, along with a robust plan on how to maintain safety and security on our campuses for our students, classified professionals and other employees before actually returning to work. That's the end of the campus reports. Thank you very much for your support of the Peralta Classified Senate.
President Napolea Bellarys, are you set and ready to take back the chair of the gavel?
I sure am. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, I think it's just in time for public comment.
Uh, did we do the district academic senate report?
Yes, we did.
Great. All right, I'm going to hand it over to you for public comments.
Thank you so much. Sasha, um, do you know how many of the, we've got about 17 people here, 16 people who've signed up for public comment? Do you know how many of them are in the room or in the waiting room?
We currently have um, three folks in the waiting room um, or in the attendees room. Two of them are named the same, but I think they may be different folks. So I will move over Stephen Aldrich right now.
Thank you very much, My. Um, I forget there's this division of duties between the two of you and I can't quite always remember who's handling what. Um, so yes, you're moving over Stephen Aldrich?
Yes, he's in the room.
Okay. Stephen Aldrich, you are now up and you have three minutes.
Perfect. Thank you so much for the time. Meeting many of you for the first time and certainly all of you virtually for the first time. I'm Stephen Aldrich, Chair of the Oakland Roots, Oakland's only professional soccer club. We're a purpose-driven, community-centric club founded back in 2018 to harness the magic of Oakland and the power of sport as a force for social good. We've been proud to call Laney as our home field since our first match in 2019. And we've also trained both Merritt College and the College of Alameda. With the upcoming loosening of restrictions in the California economy and the ability to be safe to be in outdoor activities, we have our first game since March 7th of 2020 uh, on Juneteenth at Laney versus the Sacramento Republic. It'll be a fun and competitive rivalry match. Uh, and also will, given the significance of Juneteenth, feature local musicians, a block party in East 10th and an event uh, following on the heels of an NAACP event at the Laney Slough. Uh, we'd love to see you all there and invite you and the rest of uh, the community at Peralta to come to the game. We've created a 10% discount code for single game tickets for the entire Peralta community. Peralta 21, I can send that afterwards as well if, if that's easier, but Peralta 21. And I'd welcome the opportunity to meet with any of you individually to go deeper and answer questions about our work with Peralta and the different schools uh, within the district. It's been a really great couple of years of partnership and we look forward to it continuing.
Oh my God, did you invite us to a party? That sounds so fun. All right, good. Well, please post it in the chat so that we can follow up. That sounds like a lot of fun. Um, My, who else is in the room there?
There was another individual um, that was named Stephen Aldrich. I'm not sure if that was someone else who wanted to speak. They are in the room if they want to. Um, and then there is My Williams and I don't, she's not on the list and she doesn't have her hand up, so I'm not sure if she wants to speak. I can move her over if you'd like just to check, but.
Well, sure, that sounds fine, but so there's nobody else on this whole list of 16 people who, well, all right, I guess they decided they had other things they wanted to do on a Tuesday night. Um, is the alternative Stephen Aldrich, somebody who wants to speak and has signed up? Okay, it looks like, Madam President, we are done with public comment very quickly and unexpectedly, so I'm going to hand the gavel back to you.
Okay, sounds good. And we are then 2.12 chancellor's reports. Chancellor?
Have the um, presidents to make their report first and I'd like to start um, by having BCC make their report.
Hang on, chancellor, I just see a, a hand from the other person who's labeled as Stephen Aldrich and I just wanted to make sure, was that? No, okay, that person went away. Sorry for interrupting.
I removed them from the room just because they didn't speak, speak up when you called on them. I can move them back if you would like me to.
They can message me in the chat if that seems to be um, if they, if they're, they're signed up. Uh, chancellor, please continue.
All right, I'd like to have the presidents make their report first and then I, I do have uh, some comments and a short update. So um, we'll start with the Berkeley City College, followed by Merritt College, um, then Laney College and then last but not least, College of Alameda. So, Helica?
Yes, thank you. Um, good evening, um, colleagues, members of the Board of Trustees, community members. I feel like we're a little bit in summer mode, so I want to call you summer colleagues um, as we, as we start here. My report this evening, I would like to begin um, by highlighting our chancellor's trophy award recipient. A Berkeley City College student, Crystal Swan, whom I believe I shared a little bit about her um, a few meetings ago, was the BCC president's medallion award winner and she was selected as the chancellor's trophy award. We are incredibly proud of her. She will do great things and the financial scholarship amount that goes with her transfer will do her well, but I, I also want to take a moment to um, thank, or excuse me, uh, um, just congratulate each of the college presidents' medallion winners. They represent the very best of our district and of our colleges. And although Crystal may have received the trophies award this spring, um, it is, uh, it, it should not go unnoticed that the other three students are of equal levels of caliber and wishing them all the best. I also want to thank Executive Director Lenise Jones, um, who oversees the Peralta Foundation. Uh, we have been doing some great work as a board over the year and very energized and excited about the possibilities. I have learned a great deal um, in conversation with my colleagues here about how we can strengthen the board's commitment to bring in real dollars to support students. Um, I figure we should just be clear that that's what we're trying to do. Um, another update is uh, during this summer process, we are in a summer collaboration phase in our design build for our new building. We are very excited and it feels a little bit weird to be imagining a building that will um, that will come online in 2024, but our building user groups kick off tomorrow. So my gratitude to faculty, classified professionals and administrators who are contributing to that process. And I look forward to sharing how we're meeting those benchmarks throughout the year. My deepest uh, gratitude to interim vice chancellor, Atheria Smith, and the team behind the scenes to help us stay on project. I am um, with my colleagues, fellow presidents, this is my last comment for the evening, is we will be appearing before the um, ACCJC Commission later this week. Absolutely thrilled to share not only about the good work that we have continued to do, but the ways in which um, Berkeley City College and our own internal operations, as well as our collaborative operations across the district, um, will, will represent the very best of what we're trying to accomplish and um, hope that our commissioners are able to see that progress. And with that, I, that concludes the Berkeley City College report.
Okay, I guess I'm next. Uh, good evening, President Napolea Bellarys, Board of Trustees, Chancellor, Peralta family and community members. I'm pleased to share this uh, report. So I'll start by saying that uh, we are excited to share that we are applying for the developing Hispanic-serving institutions, DH, DHSI program Title V grant, otherwise known as the HSI grant, yes. So for those who are uninitiated, uh, this program provides grants to HSIs to expand and enhance academic offerings to improve program quality and instructional stability. So we're looking to join our Peralta sister colleges in receiving this designation and will be submitting the application for the $5 million grant next spring. Um, so should our application be successful, here are just a few of the things that we hope to accomplish here at Merit, which is increase the number of Latinx and other underrepresented students. That can be served by the institution by expanding courses and, and instructional resources. Uh, we want to bolster uh, community outreach and student services programs designed to improve academic success. Uh, we hope to extend tutoring and counseling and other student service programs. And we want to improve our institutional capacity and student academic success as it relates to providing uh, DE, distance, distance education. So we want to improve in that area. And we're going to be working through our participatory governance uh, bodies to strategize and inform the process and we'll keep everyone apprised. Next, uh, with the term drawing to an end, thought it would be appropriate for us to take a moment to review uh, our enrollment. Just want to share a little bit about Merit's enrollment. Uh, but before I do that, I, I really need to commend the faculty uh, for working hard to uh, keep their students, retain their students through a very difficult term. I also want to acknowledge the student service folks, financial aid, counseling, A and R, who provided the necessary support to get our students to the finish line. So with that said, when comparing the 2021 uh, spring enrollment, spring 2021 to spring 2020, the total FTS for Merritt College did drop by 203 FTS. And our productivity fell from 15.06 to 13.64. And that would, and I basically equate to the average class size uh, being down to 28 as opposed to being 31. Um, all things considered, I think we appeared better than expected, given uh, what some other colleges have experienced. So that was what happened in the spring, but I have good news. I'm glad tidings. I actually submitted my board report with one set of figures and I just looked at the enrollment figures a little bit more than an hour ago. And I can report that with the start of the summer term still ahead, Merritt Summer 2021 FTS is actually 33.72 FTS above what it was last summer. So our enrollment is growing and our productivity is at a robust 16.88. So we're not at 17.5 quite yet, which may be a function of reduced class sizes, but we're getting there. And, and again, the semester, the, the summer term, we're not even done enrolling yet. So I want to um, definitely give kudos to, to Merit's team um, in that regard. And then finally, Juneteenth as well. Uh, June 19th, Merritt College were partnering with Kaiser Permanente to put on a community outreach event in recognition and celebration of Juneteenth. Now, given the strong ties that Merit has, our allied health division uh, has with Kaiser through our nursing and rad tech and medis programs, we're really uh, pleased to co-sponsor this event and, which is an effort to reinforce the pipeline uh, between Kaiser and Merritt and broadly disseminate additional job placement opportunities. It was 50, but I can tell you as of today, up to 100 vaccinations will be provided on that particular day. We're looking at passing out meals as well. So my admonition to everyone under the sound of my voice and watching is come, check us out at Merritt, get your vaccination, get a little bit of food, then head down to Laney and watch that Oakland Roots soccer match, make it a full day. So that is the report from Merritt College.
Good evening, Chancellor, uh, members of the board and colleagues in education. Actually, uh, glad that Dr. Johnson brought up food distribution because that's actually where I'm going to start this evening. On May 24th, uh, we actually had a special guest uh, or special guests come to our food distribution efforts and specifically, it was folks from the World Central Kitchen, our, our valued partners uh, who came and uh, actually uh, interacted with the students and as well as with the great professionals we have at Laney who have been uh, working so hard uh, to distribute food and uh, actually, if you go to the World Central Kitchen Facebook page, starting on June 4th, uh, you will see posts uh, about their visit and just some great stories being shared. Uh, this is the part when I talk about uh, the collaboration that's gone on, where I love to share the data with you about what we've done so far. So here goes one more time. 139 dates, we have uh, served meals, 61, over 61,000 meals, 15,200 produce boxes distributed, and here we go, 18,200 students served. So we are so grateful to the collaboration with the World Central Kitchen. And also, um, as always, uh, just to, to those who volunteered, as well as all of our great folks in food services and administrative services at Laney College, um, it has really taken a team effort to continue to reach out to our students and serve their needs. So speaking again of students, um, and I, I've touched on graduation a little bit in my last report, but I've got so much to share with, so much more to share with you tonight. Um, I've got a lot of numbers that I think you'll find neat. Uh, the first number is going to be three. Uh, these are the numbers of our colleagues in the library who uh, graduated with uh, postgraduate degrees uh, this spring. Uh, they include Reginald Constant and Dominic Dozier, who received their master's degrees. And uh, special recognition to Francis Howard, or should I say Dr. Francis Howard, who earned his PhD. So I thought that's the first one, so three. My second number that I have for you is 29. Um, this past week, I was privileged to attend the cosmetology uh, graduation celebration. There were over 80 people in attendance to, who uh, came in full force to congratulate the 29 graduates in cosmetology. And if you think about all of the limitations and the challenges that cosmetology especially has had this past year, uh, to graduate 29 individuals is absolutely extraordinary. And I think a big tip of the cap has to go to the, the faculty and the staff and, and even the students who supported each other during that time. Um, also, it was a great pleasure to, to go to uh, the Latinx uh, graduation celebration on Saturday and congratulate all of our graduates there. Um, it was especially great to see uh, actually three students from our Associated Students of Laney College or our student government, who were very prominent in that ceremony and uh, just had an opportunity to thank them one last time for their great service to Laney College. And then the last two numbers I'm going to leave you with are 1,108, those are the numbers of degrees and certificates we awarded, and 670, the number of graduates uh, that took place overall. So just in closing, I want to say congratulations to the graduates, staff, faculty and administrators who contributed to all of these successes. At Laney College, success is truly a team effort. This ends my report.
Good evening, um, President Reese, trustees, Chancellor Jackson, colleagues and guests. I would like to start my report this evening by also saying congratulations to the graduates that attended the first annual Peralta Latinx graduation ceremony that took place this past Saturday. It was a wonderful celebration of some amazing and resilient students. Next, I'd like to indicate that our career discovery day that took place on May 13th and 14th was a tremendous success. Um, attendees were able to view presentation from a range of um, COA programs, including apparel design and merchandising. including apparel design and merchandising, automotive technology, aviation maintenance technology, business and entrepreneurship, dental assisting, certified nursing and others. I would like to thank Dean Jennings for organizing and everyone that presented and participated in the program. Because our aviation maintenance technology program was able to put in place COVID-19 protocols, we were able to continue to provide instruction that allowed more than 35 students to be able to continue their education. And we are on track to graduate 20 of these remarkable students this coming summer. So hats off to the team at Aviation Mechanics. We couldn't have done it without you. And congratulations to all of those who persisted in their education and those who are on track for graduating this summer. COA's spring intercession started on June 1st and will continue for the next four weeks, ending on June 25th. Intercession courses offer students the opportunity to earn full-time credit for classes that meet the requirements for transfer to CSU and/or UC in just four weeks. We offer 32 classes where the average enrollment is somewhere around 23 students per class. Enrollment has been a little bit sluggish as compared to previous years, but it will help us get closer to meeting our enrollment targets for the year and reduce the shortfall. COA Puente program doubled since the last year and Puente is now enrolling students for the cohorts that will begin in the fall and spring term. 70 new students have signed up thus far for the Puente programs. And then also, the Accesso Program has partnered with Oakland Unified School District to have a program, Newcomers Transition Program, to host a one-day bridge event this fall for newcomers, students attending College of Alameda. Newcomers are being, are students that are defined as recent immigrants. So this program is intended to help these new immigrants transition into the college. As has been stated before, the college president, the chancellor and vice chancellor Ahmed are preparing for our presentation and appearance before ACCJC Commission, which occurs this Thursday. As has been stated, we are intending to represent all the good work that we as a college and district continue to do to address the issues and concerns raised by our accreditors in a very, very collegial and partnering manner. So that ends my report for this evening. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, presidents. I do have three items that I'd like to update the board as well as the district community on. The first one is on our Emergency Operations Center and I will cover some of the concerns that our district classified Senate President Fisher highlighted in his report. First of all, the EOC or the Emergency Operations Center is the body that takes the recommendations from the administration and is comprised of our collegial process with our presidents, key individuals on the campus that are responsible for facilities and our shared governance colleagues. It is chaired by interim Vice Chancellor Atheria Smith and we have continued to provide updates and maybe not all of that gets out. So that's why I want to take a little bit of time to talk about it. We've maintained the shelter-in-place directive for summer school, but beginning in the fall semester, we're looking to increase the face-to-face instruction on campus to about 30%. We have contracted, in preparation for that, we've contracted with Forensics Analytics to take a look at airflow, HVAC, water systems, as well as occupancy and traffic flow. We are in the middle of that process right now, having completed College of Alameda, Berkeley City College and also the aviation facility at College of Alameda. They should have completed their assessment of Merit College today and they will be working with Laney College and we anticipate that to be completed by the end of next week. That will then give us information for us to make some decisions on what our needs are. We've also developed a participatory health, safety and security district-wide task force. We are still looking for student participation and that committee has taken what has been recommended through the shared governance bodies, that we take a holistic approach by adopting the recommendations from our Laney College-led Black Minds Matter. We may want to look at a broader vaccination policy that is consistent with the CSUs and the UCs. And that policy currently is that they may require vaccinations for individuals to return to campus once the COVID-19 vaccine is approved for general use. But that has not happened yet. Once that we get the notification, then we'll make appropriate recommendations and that will come to the board. We are currently seeking a director for public safety. The committee has been established and we're still in the open recruitment stages. So if you know of anyone who might be interested, please refer them to our HR website. Yesterday at Laney College, we had a pop-up clinic for free Moderna COVID vaccinations. They were given to our students, our staff, their families and community members. Many thanks to retired Laney faculty member Louis Quinlan, who is still hanging in there with us. Thanks, Louis, for coming up with the idea of hosting a clinic and using it to provide some community outreach. And also for Laney Faculty Senate President Elaine Gastus for bringing the idea to my attention. And I asked Mark Johnson to move forward and he reached out to the Alameda County Public Health Department and their PIO and they agreed that it was a great idea. They lined up with Chadworth Pharmacy to provide the vaccination service. Amy Marshall, the Director of Facilities and College Operations at Laney, finalized the arrangements and took care of the logistics. And the clinic happened, like I said, yesterday outdoors in front of the Laney Tower. So many thanks to Dean Mildred Lewis, the faculty members, again, Lewis and Elaine, Mark Razong, Fred Bourgogne, Penner Alsar and Bill Trejo for providing outreach services and answering questions from those that participated and that attended the pop-up clinic at Laney College. I also want to thank the Laney custodial crew who pitched in to make sure that we maintain distance and that we cleaned up. And as I often say, it takes a village. And this was an example of many people coming together to serve our community. The second shot for these groups par allow the FAS email list, where FAS stands for Faculty Administrators and Staff. And the FAS lists are used by the administration for important employee communication district-wide. And so these new groups will include an all Paralta list for district-wide communication. There will be groups for each of the colleges and groups for faculty and classified professionals district-wide, as well as by college campus. And it will also allow for peer-to-peer communication by role, by campus and by bargaining unit. And you can opt out if you so choose. So that is an update on those three areas that I wanted to provide. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chancellor. Thank you, presidents. That was quite an update, a lot going on. Absolutely wonderful to hear. And let us move on to presentations. We've got two presentations this evening, 3.1.
Can I ask a question, Madam President?
Oh yeah, absolutely. I just didn't even ask.
I'm sorry. In the Merit presentation, you talk about the productivity factor and it shows the College of Alameda 12.3, Berkeley at 13.1, Laney at 12 and Merit at 13.6 and the state calling for 17.5. This is an area that I know enough to know I don't know enough. There's quite a difference. There's a whole spread dropping from 17.5. And what this would indicate to most financial types is that there's a resource allocation issue here. And that, again, I don't, I know enough to know I don't know enough, but is the amount of money that we receive from the state in our support, is that a function of the 17.5 productivity factor? What I'd like to have, if I could recommend it, not necessarily tonight, but at the next board meeting, somebody put together a package to explain what that is. You know, a lot of people talk about it from the state level and whatever. But again, at least for me, I don't know what it is. I don't know what it is.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Withrow. And I'll jump in, you know, Dr. Johnson. We are planning some improved outreach efforts. We've had discussions, not only at the chancellor's cabinet level, but also with the district administrators. And I've had one-on-one discussions with our executive director of marketing, communications and public relations. And we do have a campaign that we are looking at sending off for the fall semester. And I would recommend next, our next board meeting is really going to be impacted with presentations on the tentative budget. So if we could defer that, in that way, we'll be able to give you a better understanding of what our marketing is. And I'll work with Dr. Brown on leading that effort to provide some clarification on FTS and also working with our interim vice chancellor of finance to show how that relates to budget and how that could be impacted based upon those numbers. So if we could defer that until we're better able to provide you more of a holistic review rather than just on that particular item. And maybe, I'm thinking maybe at our July meeting, we should be able to do that.
Great, thank you.
And maybe I'd add, Chancellor, I know that 17.5 is a number that we haven't met for many years and I think that that's been asserted or that's been stated by a few of our trustees. And so when we talk about it in July, kind of what that means in terms of revenue, what that means in terms of consequences, what that means in terms of not just next steps to try to get there, but if historically our trend analysis has been such that we haven't met it, what exactly does that mean in terms of consequences? I think that that's kind of what we certainly would like to hear.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chancellor. All right, let's go to presentations. 3.1, Other OPEB Bonds Program Review or Program Overview.
All right, I'd like to introduce Erwin Tam and he will provide an overview of the OPEB bonds. I know we bounce that term around a lot. And so he gave me an update and it was so good. I said, we need to do this for the board, just because we haven't done it in a while. And I think it's just good for us to kind of refresh our memory of what OPEB is. And it also has an impact on our budget, which is coming up. And so Erwin is with Backstrom, MacCarley, Berry and Company. And so I will turn it over to you, Erwin.
Great.
Please let me know if you'd like me to share the screen for you.
Um, should, I can also share, is that okay or?
That's perfect.
Okay, let's see if I can get this thing up. All right, hi, everyone. I'm Erwin Tam with Backstrom, MacCarley, Berry. I'm part of the municipal advisory team for the district's general obligation and OPEB bonds. We were invited by the chancellor to present this overview of the OPEB bond program. And, but one important note before we get started, I would like to remind everyone that this is an informational item being presented to the board. No action is being taken by the board today. But this presentation is to provide a common level of understanding so that if and when decisions need to be made about the OPEB bond program, members of the board have the background knowledge to make such decisions. So as part of its ongoing financial obligations, the district has agreed to pay for post-employment benefits for its employees. And if there are no other sources of funds, payments for all of these obligations would be paid out of the district's general fund. And back in 2005, the district issued $153 million of bonds, which would fund a $150 million deposit into a trust called the Retiree Health Benefit Program Fund. And the purpose of this was threefold. First, it was to finance the estimated future of obligations, future obligation of employees hired prior to July 1, 2004, through the deposit of funds and earnings on those funds. And second, and lastly, it is to shift potential costs over time. So that's kind of, so again, it had twofold. Again, to fund, using the earnings, the principal and the earnings on the deposit and to match the retiree health benefits that would be paid over time and also to shift the burden from early on in the life of the program to further out in the life of the program. And the other important date on this page is in 2011, investments in the fund began to be overseen by the Independent Retirement Board. So the structure of bonds was already complex to begin with and they were a series of fixed rate bonds and six tranches of convertible auction rate securities. And several events have transpired since the initial issuance of bonds in 2005 that has made this debt program a lot more complicated. First, in 2006, the district entered into a series of forward-starting swaps with Morgan Stanley that go to maturity of the bonds. Second, the auction rate securities market failed in 2008, meaning that when the bonds were originally issued, they were issued as convertible auction rate securities. They may not be able to convert to auction rate securities on their stated date. And lastly, the district also restructured its existing obligations three times, deferring debt service. So here's a quick timeline of the OPEB bond program. We've already talked a little bit about some of these key dates. And so I just wanted to call out again, two additional dates that we haven't discussed yet, which is in fiscal 2011, there was an OPEB charge that was established that directed general fund monies into the trust. All right, and then the second one is August 5th, 2016. And that actually is the first payment date that the district actually made all of its outstanding principal payments as originally structured. So prior to 2016, from 2006 to 2015, the district had deferred its debt service. And again, 16, from 16 onwards, including last year and this year, the district has paid its principal due in full. So it's spent a lot more time deferring its debt than actually paying it. So what are the key drivers of this OPEB bond program? And I've tried to simplify this into two sources and two uses. So we talk about the Retiree Health Benefit Program Fund and that's the name that was given to the fund in the indenture of trust. It's also used interchangeably with Trust 1 and Fund 94. And I guess, you know, what an important thing to note is it's called Fund 94 because the monies in a trust are restricted district funds and has received a designation as Fund 94 as such. And the district, in its annual audits, includes the assets of its trust in its financial statements. As previously mentioned, starting in 2011, the district directed general fund money, in addition to the original deposit of $150 million annually. in addition to the original deposit of a hundred fifty million dollars annually to the trust. And this totaled forty seven million dollars since then. And we'll talk about it a little bit more in the future. But this is, that is in part what has caused the existing surplus in the trust today. That the district, again, contributed more money than it needed to over the overtime. On the right side, in the the upper right hand corner, alongside the money in trust, the district's general fund is the other source of revenue for the bond program. And it's important to note that the district's general fund is, in fact, the ultimate source of payment for everything. The it is, the district is obligated to pay debt service, fees, expenses, swaps, and all retiree health benefits when due. So this is irrespective of any other source of revenues, the district's general fund is is on the hook to pay these amounts. And what are the, what are, what are we spending the money on is is located in the bottom half of the page. Retiree health benefits, which are defined by the, you know, in the indenture as healthcare premiums for eligible retirees hired prior to July one, two thousand and four. And on the bottom right side, it includes debt service swaps and fees, include, including, again, all advisory fees, interest rate swaps, and credit enhancement. I know it's, I know some of the college presidents mentioned some numbers. If you like numbers, then you'll like all the numbers on this page. There's a lot of them. The point of this page is not to, you know, review every single number, but shows that we have tried to paint a complete picture of the district's future financial liabilities for the district, and we update it as often as the district would like. And again, this is accounts for all the potential costs, principal, interest, fees, swaps, and consultant fees as well for the program. So I guess, you know, I, there's, there's a more detailed explanation on the next page. So what's happening now with the program? So on page seven, we have historical and estimated bond program payments. So the first two columns next to the fiscal year are general fund sources, either through revenues or annual funds, or sorry, either through annual appropriations, which is the dedicated and supplemental appropriation, or funds on hand and reserves, which is a special reserve fund draw. The combination of those two, those are rich, those are funds that originated in the general fund, but have been held aside, you know, again, as a reserve for the district's O P E B bond program. In the fourth column over, there's the draw from Trust One to cover principal payments. You can see that number has changed over time, and for the next fiscal year, it is estimated to be six point nine million dollars. And I think this makes a, this, this table makes it a lot easier to see what the O P E B obligation is for the district. In fiscal two thousand and seventeen, let's go back to that first principal payment as due. You can see there that the, in order to make the principal payment as scheduled, there was a draw on the trust of six point eight seven five million dollars. Right? And total debt service went from the year prior of eight point one million up to twelve point seven million. Now, where is that? What does that mean for today? It means that in this current fiscal year, let's get, let's go look down at fiscal two thousand and twenty one. Debt, total debt service and fees is estimated at sixteen point seven million dollars. And this number is almost twice that amount that would the district was paying in fiscal two thousand and sixteen. And if you look at the district's unrestricted general fund revenues, those number, those amounts that the district has to pay on hand are basically flat to down. So again, the district is paying twice as much debt service in this current fiscal year, fiscal year two thousand and twenty one, than it did in fiscal two thousand and sixteen with about the same amount of financial resources. On page eight, we have the future projections. So what does it look like going forward? This is, this is only a single scenario. This scenario shows an increase of one million dollars from the district's general fund annually to pay debt service and fees. And I would like to note that, again, even if we assume that the district is able to contribute one million dollars a year, it would need to draw on the trust up to two thousand and thirty two to pay the total estimated debt service and fees of twenty one point four million dollars. And this is just one scenario in that we are working with. We have been working with the district's finance staff in evaluating other alternatives. But again, this is a snapshot of a single scenario we have, we have evaluated with the district's finance staff. Now, we, I want to note that we, we, we talk about draws to pay principal. The board retains control of, over all of its sources of funds. You know, the board controls expenditures through the general fund, through the passage of its tentative and final adopted budgets, and it can can control draws out of the trust. And the general way the district can draw monies out of the trust is described in the indenture of trust. And last year, the board unanimously approved a procedure to enact its powers, just as described in the indenture. As, sorry, and we'll talk about that on the next page. And lastly, it's always been expected that the, that the district could draw monies from the trust to pay principal. It was told so in a special board shop, work, board workshop in two thousand and five, prior to the issuance of bonds, and it made a draw to pay principal less than twelve months later in two thousand and six, which is fiscal two thousand and seven. And what are the process that was described under resolution nineteen dash twenty forty four? This was, again, unanimously approved by the board last year. It states a very simple calculation. Let's look at the assets that are contained in the trust, subtract out the liabilities as determined using the supplemental valuation report. And so I guess there is some question of what the supplemental valuation report is. As per Gadsby rules, the district needs to present value its future liabilities using the tax exempt rate on twenty year bond maturities. It is the bond by twenty index again. For fiscal two thousand and twenty, it happened to be two point two percent. It turns out that FICMAT said that that number was too low. And their, in their recommendation to the district in two thousand and nineteen, they recommended that the district use a discount rate based on the return on assets in the trust, so it has a more realistic liability number. So for this supplemental report, it uses a discount rate of six point three percent, which compares to the actual annualized rate of return in the trust of approximately six point five percent. So I'm also joined today, I think, with John Palmer, who's bond counsel from Oark Harrington and Sutcliffe. And I think that this concludes our formal presentation, and we will open it up for questions.
Thank you for that. Trustees, do we have any outstanding questions at this moment?
Yes.
Okay, Trustee Withrow, please, go ahead.
Well, first of all, I thank you very much for putting together this package, this presentation. While I disagree with a number of things that are in it, the intent and the scope is what the board should have received on a regular basis. And to the best of my knowledge, this board has never received anything this extensive on any of this, as a matter of fact. A lot of my issues had to do with legal issues. And I don't want to get into some of these. I prefer to do it on an offline basis to begin with, but the attorneys that we've had giving advice to the retirement board is that an O P E B trust has to be irrevocable. And I know that they're saying that because it's capped and will eventually go away, that it can be considered revocable. My concern is in a, given I've had a lot of licenses and whatever in the in the financial community. But the issue of was taking an example of the two point two percent. The two point two percent, I think, was used in accordance with state guidance law. Because the when you have a revocable trust, it's taxpayer money. An irrevocable trust, it is not taxpayer money. It's been committed. And the reason I bring this up is that and this gets into a lot of things over and above and beyond strictly the relationship between the independent retirement board, as you call it, and the governing board and the chancellor. The there, there's a basic law, unless it's been changed, and I've got attorneys working to to determine whether there has been a modification to it. But there's been a basic law, a very strict law, that taxpayer money cannot be exposed to financial risk beyond FDIC insured or better. And that's why the, the two point two percent was designated, because this is classified by the institution, by the institution as a revocable trust. This is, this is a very serious thing to look at it in a, from a number of directions. Number one, if in fact, we were forced to no longer participate in the capital markets arena. And we do this in a, in a reasonably conservative fashion. But if we were to go to high grade debt, the return on the investment would plummet, would absolutely plummet. That's number one. Number two, putting my, for the institution to put money into the trust, like the forty seven million you talk about, and then pull it back out again is something that the, again, I've got attorneys looking at that to determine can we legally do this? And I've got to say that this is not just a, a Gadsby kind of issue. This is something that is very serious from the standpoint of, and is a licensed individual. Erwin, I know you understand what I'm talking about here. Now, from a positive standpoint, on the, on the presentation, I really appreciate the fact that it's putting whether we agree with the numbers or not. But put it into perspective, we're looking at the, on page six, at the bottom right hand collar, the total commitment through twenty thousand fifty instead of twenty thousand sixty five, anyway, twenty thousand fifty. We're looking at nine hundred and nine million dollars. And right now, we have seven hundred and two retirees that come into this. Seven hundred and two retirees. We're looking at a commitment of nine hundred and nine million dollars. This is something that all of us have to look at from the standpoint of how we make decisions on a financial basis. It's huge. Mammoth, as a matter of fact. Not the least of which, and I, and again, I don't want to get into asking you questions on particular numbers, and you've mentioned this before, but the healthcare costs column on page six, the next to the last column, you're showing healthcare costs for two thousand and twenty one to be eight thousand, eight million, rather, eight million point three. We, in fact, out of retirement, pulled it out of Trust One, thirteen million for that year. That's, that's five million bucks. And that's the kind of thing, if somebody were to come in on an external audit, would raise red flags all over the place. Number two, as you go down that column in the cost, and it's, it's more complex, and none of this stuff has simple answers to it. But as you're going down there, you either have flattened it. Actually, it's nowhere near, none of these numbers come close to what we've been paying for healthcare costs. As I say, this, this for twenty twenty twenty, we paid thirteen million dollars out roughly, I'm rounding off, above thirteen million. But not only that, Tom Scher, the medical advisor to the district on healthcare cost insurance, all these various programs and whatever. The last time I talked to him, in a pre pandemic nineteen type thing. But just to put it into perspective, the cost increase and healthcare costs in the state of California is going up at the rate of five to six percent a year. But then he stumbled and says, but in Peralta, it's going up at the rate of ten to eleven percent. That's not reflected here. And a compounded rate in any of those numbers, obviously, they're going to change by year by year and what's going on and whatever, but those are mammoth numbers. And they need to be reflected in a, in a true scenario. So we have a real sense of the, what you call the liability, which is the actuarial figure.
Trustee Withrow, I think I also have chance, the chancellor with her hand up. So did you have a question, or may I go to Chancellor Jackson?
Go to Chancellor Jackson.
So, thank you, Trustee Withrow. You have been at the beginning of when the retirement board was created, and I appreciate your historical knowledge of that. I think that some of the questions that you pose, we are planning, and we've already started, as you mentioned, with the attorneys for the retirement board and working with our advisors to get to, if there is a discrepancy between the numbers, to identify that and to get some clarity on that. This presentation was really just to give an overview. I, I know that we have at least two new board members who I, I wanted to make sure as we go forward with budget, and we start, start talking about numbers, at least have, you know, some education on, on O P E B and what that means. And if necessary, can refer back to our slides as, as we go forward. But I know we are not going to address all of the concerns that you have tonight. And, and, but we're moving towards that. What I'm saying is that I understand what you're saying, maybe some other people don't. But those are the kind of details that we need to iron out before we go forward this next year. That is a concern that was identified, as Erwin said, in the FICMAT report that we got. And it, that's something that we're addressing right now.
Thank you. By the way, I, I, I still want to state that this was a very, very positive move to put this presentation out. Very positive.
I, I just have a couple of questions and or a comment. Thank you for the presentation. As Trustee Withrow just said right now, this is so challenging. It's so incredibly complicated. But thank you for doing this presentation. And you have actually engaged the trustees in many training sessions where we've been able to delve in a couple hours at a time to be able to understand this more. And and truth be told, it's, it's always complicated, right? It's, you know, even though you've heard it a few times over, it continues to be very challenging to remember all of the details, and it just is complicated. I do have a question for you, though. So I'm looking at page nine, just two, two quick questions. So on page five, as you lay out the sources and uses of O P E B bond programming, just the way that you have the sources and the uses, weren't, oh, if we can go up a couple to slide five. We're not necessarily saying that what's on the left hand side, Trust Fund ninety four goes to retiree health benefits, and Peralta CCC General and other funds go to bond debt services, right? So even though they're one on top of the other, it isn't necessarily that straight edged or that clear in terms of the source and the use.
Correct. Right. And I was trying to make the additional point that, again, if the trust had no dollars in it, the, the district's general fund would have to pay both of the bottom uses.
Excellent. Excellent. And then the, the second question that I have goes back to the slide that you had up previously, which is page nine. So these three excerpts, I think, are really important, slide nine, because they, they provide a lot of clarity where there has been confusion. The second paragraph, the question or second excerpt, the question I have there is, do, do we have a procedure? Do we have a mechanism and a procedure? It speaks to a procedure that has been established, or that should be established. Do we have that at this point, or?
And that's, that's the calculation that was on the following page. Page ten is the procedure that was described in the, in that resolution.
Okay, great, great.
I mean, this is a, this is a I mean, this is a, this is a summary of how it, how the mechanics of it works. I think there was, you know, there were certain dates and certain target meetings associated with that resolution, but generally speaking, the cert, it was, this is the mechanics of the determination of the surplus.
Okay, great. And, and then just lastly, and I think that you'll probably talk with us about this later on. And it goes, it touches a little bit on what trustee Withrow had just said a second ago. So FICMAT had said 2.20 is a little low, but FICMAT also isn't necessarily the financial center for those guidelines. So we went to 6.3. And at some point in time, it'd be interesting, it would just be, it would just be good to, to know wh- whether the 2.2 remark from FICMAT was correct and whether 6.3 is where we need to be or if it is, if it's a little high or if it's a little low. And again, that could be at some point not true.
Yeah, the, the only data point that we have in this presentation is the actual rate of return on the trust assets from 2012 to present. And that was again at 6.5%, or 6, 6.53%. So it gave us a little comfort that the 6.3% number was, was a, was a good one, at least for this year. And determining underneath the, again, the surplus valuation report calculation.
I, I would just add, and this is John Palmer, I'm bond counsel to the district. I work at a, or a Harrington and Sutcliffe. That part of the idea behind the different rates used for revocable and irrevocable trusts is that an irrevocable trust is thought to be available for withdrawal at any time. And so the investment strategy for a revocable trust tends to be in shorter-term and more liquid investments. And that investment strategy tends to reduce the yield, whereas a, an irrevocable trust, because it's not available for withdrawal under most circumstances, can be invested in longer-term and less liquid assets, which tends to increase the yield. And as we see in the annualized rate of return from 2012 to 2020, our, our return has been substantially higher than the 20-year AA-rated tax-exempt bond yield and has been much more in line with the rate of return used by the supplemental valuation report. And I think that it was in recognition of the fact that although our trust doesn't meet the technical definition of an irrevocable trust, it functions much more like an irrevocable trust than a revocable trust. And our investment strategy so far has been that of an irrevocable trust versus a revocable trust. And so I, I think that that was sort of the basis for FICMAT recommending that we use a higher discount rate in, in evaluating the trust's funding.
Thank you.
That was a mouthful, I apologize.
No, helpful, very helpful. Okay, trustees, do we have any other questions or comments? If none, thank you. Thank you both, John and Irwin. We'll see you again because the conversation is not over.
We'll see you through 2049.
2050, that's right.
Thank you very much, both of you, John, you and Irwin.
Great. Okay, let us move on to the next item. In front of me, but I know that Vice Chancellor Siri Brown is presenting it. Where's my other presentation title?
Yes, I, I have asked, yes, I had asked Dr. Brown if she would lead the discussion. This was one of the items that was on our, our board calendar and it was deferred. And I felt that it was appropriate for us to do that now. And so I'll turn it over to Dr. Brown and I believe she's going to also invite some of the vice presidents. Am I correct, Siri?
Yes, you're correct, Chancellor. Thank you. And good evening, Board of Trustees and Chancellor Jackson, colleagues and community. I'm pleased to be here tonight to talk about all of the great work that's happening in student services, both at the colleges and at the district. And like Dr. Jackson just referenced, I have invited the vice presidents of student services from the colleges as well as Dean Diane Chang from Laney College to give you some examples of what's happening on the college campuses. So next slide please. So we are constantly asking ourselves the question, what is it that students need to be successful in the Peralta colleges? And this question is asked and answered from many different perspectives, including the student voice and what students are telling us that they need, looking at innovative practices and technology that's happening around the nation and the state, and also looking at established best practices and assessing them to ensure that we are serving students as best as we can. So this presentation is designed around those three major areas. And we'll look at a few slides of data to show you that it's actually having positive impact on the success rates of our students. And then we'll close out by looking at some district-wide innovative activities that we've been engaging in. Next slide. So the first area we want to talk about are the high-touch approaches. We are consistently building new and expanding successful learning communities. And I know that the Board of Trustees knows what learning communities are, but we are all very big fans of the impact on student success and retention and engagement that learning communities provide. We also are deepening our partnerships and expanding new partnerships that can serve students. And in addition, we have student-to-student support in many areas, including students helping other students learn how to navigate Canvas. To give you a campus example of one of these practices, I'd like to ask Vice President Lilia Chavez to give us an example of the Adelante FYE program. Dr. Chavez?
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Good evening, President Cindy Napoli-Bella Reese, Board of Trustees and Madam Chancellor, vice chancellors and community members and guests. I would like to share with you that at Merritt College, we have a program, it's called Adelante Summer Bridge. It means moving forward. The word adelante is forward. And it's a precursor pipeline for high school students entering the community college into, potentially, once they do the summer bridge in the summer, they go into FYE and they can select to go to Sancofa or Puente. It's not just into the FYE, but it's a way for students, a pathway for students to really enter the learning communities. The impact of FYE is really to be intentional about motivating and helping the students persist academically and in the community where they can transform themselves. It is, the adelante and FYE are consistent of summer, we have two cohorts. In the fall, we have three cohorts. And in the spring, we have an additional three cohorts, a total of eight cohorts per year, serving 252 students approximately. Our retention in the FYE, Adelante FYE is 95%. We serve 53% Latinx students and 23% African-American and the other percentages are, are lower. Also, we've seen the completion rate is at 89% as of last year. We have various approaches within the program. We do outreach, the community partnerships. We have intentional curriculum, student engagement, participation through leadership in the sense of the student FYE club and civic engagement and preparing the students for transfer. One of the big innovation points, especially with COVID, we have included focus groups, we're working with career ladders to really look and delve deeper into the challenges and issues that students need to bring to the forefront to voice their concerns and how we can better serve them and really to gain some additional knowledge and obtain some data to make informed decisions and to support the success of our students through adelante and the learning communities, FYE. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Chavez. And next slide please. We also, as you are well aware, have been focusing on addressing students' basic needs. And students are consistently calling out for support in being successful in college by having us help them with basic needs. So that includes mental health and the expansion of mental health services, food distribution, as you hear about it almost every meeting, because there's been such a phenomenal effort around that, providing hundreds of thousands of dollars of emergency funds directly to the hands of students, offering free legal services for Dreamers and offering hotspots and Chromebooks, especially during the pandemic, so that students can access online learning. And to provide a campus example of, of this area is Dean Diane Chang, who's going to talk about how Laney College is expanding their mental health efforts so that we can reach the needs of all of our students. Dean Chang?
Good evening. My name is Diane Wu Chang. I'm the interim dean of student services and here representing Laney College. As you all know, mental health is an area many students need support but lack the resources to access those services. So with the pandemic, we also saw an increased need for mental health support. And at the time, Laney College only was down to one part-time therapist on staff. So VP Ferguson and Associate Dean Gary Aubrey, they investigated additional mental health support for our students. So we're very happy to share about the partnership we've developed with John F. Kennedy University in Pleasant Hill. Using CARES funding, we contracted with JFK to provide mental health services to our students. Students are, services are provided by graduate-level therapists in training and they're supervised by licensed and experienced therapists. So we began referring students in late February and within just three months, by the end of the semester, we had 17 students were referred and between them, they had received over 40 individual therapy sessions. So the current agreement for services continued through the summer and we're working on new agreement for the next school year. This was just one way Laney College used CARES fund to respond to our students' need. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean Chang. And the mental health services are expanding everywhere across the district. We're very well aware of the impact that those services have on student success. And the next slide talks about the level of innovation that's been occurring on the campuses to make student services more accessible, to ensure that they are remote. And this all involves a lot of online technology. So in this period of the pandemic, I do have to say that a year ago, over a year ago, when the pandemic hit both sides of the house, instruction and student services, there was a great deal of lifting that had to occur to, to make ourselves fully online. But it was the student services side that really had more of the lifting to do. Because in instruction, we already had, you know, faculty who do teach online and know how to teach online. There were certainly a lot of professional development that occurred to bring all faculty the kinds of, of professional development that was needed. But on student services, although we had some services online, we still have a lot of paper and a lot of in-person services. So faculty, staff and administration did a lot of heavy work. And although there's nothing we can say good about this pandemic, the result has been a great deal of innovation and it still continues. And we are excited about the fact that when we go back 100% in person, that we will maintain and continue to build this level of innovation so that students can access us quickly with quick response times from their phones and not have to necessarily come in in person to receive the services that they need. And so the focus has been on the ease of use, access from home and access from mobile devices. So I'd like to ask Vice President of Student Services Stacy Shears, who's going to talk about the chat features that are now on every single website. This is really, really important to students and we are learning a lot from it. And Vice President Shears is going to share what's happening at Berkeley City College. Vice President Shears?
Sorry about that. I keep getting kicked out of the meeting. But yes, I just wanted to share that at Berkeley City College, we've been able to, I'm sorry, good evening, trustees and presidents and everyone, I hope you're doing well. During this pandemic, we've been able to gain more information about what students need through the use of our live chat feature. It's not something that we were using on our website before the COVID pandemic. But since using it, looking back a year, we've had 6,494 inquiries and that we've been able to track. And the average amount of time that a visitor spends on the live chat is about 15 to 20 minutes. And over this little more than a year period, we've learned some key things from students during those chats about enrollment management. So we've learned that on the first day of instruction, we get a much higher number of inquiries, about four to five times the regular amount for other days. So that means we need to make sure our services are available in a way that's very easy for students to get any blocks cleared for enrollment. And that students seem to prefer using the live chat feature over the phone, just like calling. So of course, we're available by phone, but this chatting feature is really big. And like Vice Chancellor Brown said, it wasn't something that we were doing so largely before. So this is from our regular first page of our website. Since the pandemic started, we've expanded our use of chat so that our student service areas all have chat as well for A and R, for financial aid, for counseling, veteran services as well. And then overall, we've learned that students prefer direct personalized help, that students are able to share screenshots so staff can troubleshoot issues and students can leave messages for us to reply to during our operational hours. So we really appreciate what we've been able to continue to glean from students through our use of live chat. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice President Shears. Another example on this, in this area of innovation continues to focus on accessing, access and communication with students. And so Vice President Tina Vasconcelles is going to talk about the new communication center at the College of Alameda. And her college was the test for this and now we are expanding to the other three colleges as well as the district. So Vice President Vasconcelles?
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Brown. So yes, we are, we launched this in February and we initially were calling it a call center. It's actually more, much more of a communication center. It's very exciting and the purpose is to enhance and increase outreach. For instance, as students apply to the college before they even enroll, pulling those lists out of CCC Apply and doing a proactive outreach to folks, welcoming them, inviting them and then encouraging them to connect with services. So we're doing, we have 10 student workers that we've hired for this project alone. And we've done so far between February and May, 5,000 personal phone calls. And within that, like I said, part of it is for outreach. The other piece of it is we actually have a spreadsheet with the timeline of activities. It's a data-driven process. And so the outreach is pulling data on, you know, applications and then applications and not enrolled and looking at loss points and so forth. And we have other projects in the district looking at that as well. And but in personally inviting and creating that high-touch, high service for students. The other piece of it is retention, so reaching out to students that are currently enrolled and reminding them and inviting them to engage priority registration, for instance, if they have 45 units or nearing 45 units, pulling data from our data warehouse and reaching out to those students, inviting them to meet with a counselor because they might be eligible to graduate soon and to revisit their SEP. And so there's different points throughout the entire lifecycle of the student that we've created an annual and monthly and even weekly data poll and then intervention through the communication hub. It's really It's really exciting. We don't have tons of data. What I do have anecdotally in some of the data that we were collecting is the students really, really appreciate the personal touch. They really appreciate the phone calls with just a human sort of reaching out to them. It's been really, I was worried because of pandemic and sort of a lot of issues that I was wondering, you know, what would be the feedback from students, you know, being called and so forth. And so far, it's been great. The other option that we're able to use, because we're using Zoom Phone for this, and this is the pilot that VC Brown spoke about, we're able to text students as well, and so we're able to reach out to different groups of students. The last thing that I didn't mention earlier was every week in our timeline of activities is to look at, on Fridays, pull the data on students who dropped during that week, reach out to them during that week and say, hi, we just wanted to check in with you. We noticed that you dropped your class. How can we support you? And to sort of make sure that students don't feel like they're disappearing from the college and they're staying connected with us. And so really offering ongoing support as you're coming in, as you're moving through, and as you're moving out of the college as well.
Thank you, Vice President Vasconcelles. So all of these efforts, you know, past and present, are all assessed by looking at data. It's ultimately the data that tells us is what we are doing working for students. And of course, our aim is to close equity gaps, increase access, increase success and completion. And everyone's really clear about that. So the next slide looks at some course-level data. And I won't linger long on these data slides because only a few of us really love to look at data. But you can tell from these, from these charts, that course success, course, excuse me, course retention rates by race, that every single race is increasing in terms of course retention. And again, this is due to the efforts of the Student Services side of the house for the, like the examples you just heard, as well as the instruction that's happening inside the classrooms. And the next slide is showing you overall course success rates by race. And again, you see the same trend. We don't just want students retained, we want them to be successful. And success by definition is if they get a C or better or a pass in the class. And so we're seeing major gains in course-level success. And you can see a range from six percent all the way up to fourteen percent increases in course-level student success across the various demographics. And the next slide shows an area where, where we have a little bit of work to do. We still have work to do. And the efforts that you just heard from the colleges are centered around this as well, which is, okay, we're increasing your retention, we're increasing your success. We want to increase your persistence into the next semester and the next semester onto completion. And so we still have work to do in looking at some of the demographic numbers here, and that's part of what our focus is. And the next slide then also shows you just a very brief snapshot on some of the special populations and what's happening there. And you heard from Vice President Lilia Chavez about the FYE program. And if you heard, her numbers are above those of the general student population. Ninety-five percent retention rates and et cetera. And you can see this as well. This slide is showing some various special student populations that because of the kinds of wraparound services that happen from staff, from administration, as well as faculty, that these students tend to perform very well in terms of success and retention and completion. You can also note that probably one of the most vulnerable populations, which are our foster care students, that we still have ways to go to really bring equity there and to bring those students into the level of success and retention that other student, special student populations are experiencing. And of course, efforts are there as well. The next slide is a slide I wanted to add because I asked institutional research from the district to do a study on EWs. EWs is a state law that was passed for a new form of grading in two thousand and eighteen. And prior to, to the pandemic, we saw very few EWs. EWs stands for Excuse Withdrawals, and it's for if you have something happen to you that's beyond your control. So originally, it's written for students who might be system-impacted. They might be incarcerated. It's out of their control. They might be taking care of elderly parents, and, and they just can't, it's out of their control. And so we can give an EW grade if the student requests it, and that means it won't negatively impact their GPA or negatively impact financial aid in the same way than an F would. Well, you can see from this slide that in the fall of nineteen, we had a very small number of EWs. But then spring twenty hit and the pandemic hit, and we processed nearly nine thousand excused withdrawals from students. And then fall, nearly a thousand, and this spring, that number is actually probably at about three hundred and twenty excuse withdrawals. But in looking at the excuse withdrawals, they all come directly to me. And students are asked to write a comment about why is it they're requesting the excuse withdrawal. And I started to notice that really this was capturing a student voice. Thousands of students telling us what's happening to them during the pandemic. And so I asked institutional research to do a study around it. We presented that study and shared that study as a way for us to make sure that we're aligned with what's happening with students. But what we also noticed was that we wanted to break that data down even more and, and look at the impact of synchronous classes versus asynchronous classes. You know, are students asking for EWs in one format more than the other? And so we're working on that to present that in August, in the hopes that it will inform the spring schedule. Because there's a lot of debate about synchronous versus asynchronous, and we want data to inform what's working for our students and what isn't. The next slide just shows you what probably wouldn't be a surprise to you, that if you break down the EWs that we've been tracking, that there is a disproportionate impact on Latinx students, on African-American students, on Pacific Island students, on students of more than one race. And although that doesn't surprise us, it tells us that if we are serious about equity, we have to track it and know what's happening and make sure that we're steering services towards the more marginalized and vulnerable populations. Next slide. These next few slides I will go through quickly as well because in the five-year financial plan that was submitted to ACCJC, we put forth a Student Services Technology Plan. And as much as it's been a couple of years since we submitted that, we have been sticking to that plan because it was well-vetted by shared governance. And a lot of voices went into creating the Student Services Technology Plan. And so from fall nineteen to the present, I put a check mark next to the things that we have completed in that plan. And that includes the Degree Audit Transfer In Project. This is a very important project that we have now completed, and when I say we, it's the colleges as well as the district. And it lays the foundation for us to complete Phase Two, which we're currently in, which is the completion of the auto awarding of degrees. And we expect that to be completed by October of this fall. And this is a SCIF-oriented project, as well as just a student, serving students. It ensures that students will have more accurate SEPs. Counselors will be able to direct students more accurately. And it also eases the whole process for evaluators working on the campuses. We also completed the Preferred Name Project, which is a gender equity-based project and allows us to show the kind of sensitivity that we, that we want to our students as well as our faculty. And so students have the ability to change their first name as many times as they want to during the semester. And, and we have more that we can do in that area as well. We also finally completed, and I'm very happy about this, the Accessibility Information Management System. It took a year and a half to complete this. It's the faculty that brought it to us. They brought data. They said, we've got to have this. And this ended up in the CBT recommendations. Because prior to this completion, students who are in our SAS programs, our Student Accessibility Program, formerly called DSPS, if they swirled and went to another of our campuses, they had to reapply for SAS services, which was cumbersome, slow-paced, and not in service to students. Well, AIM, which has now been completed and is live, is, is a data management system for SAS students so that they don't have to reapply, and every DSPS or SAS counselor can see the approvals and any kinds of notes and services that students in needing, needing accessibility have those services quicker and without the complications of before. Next slide. Thank you. We also completed the Campus Logic. This was another big project, grant-funded, a few hundred thousand dollars for this. And the district and the colleges worked together on this. And this is to make financial aid accessible for students from their cell phones. It's, it's easy for them to upload documents that they have to turn in. It's easy for the staff to run reports for compliance. And so this is a level of, of technology that is in support of student success. Also, thanks so much to the great work of our CTO Antoine Malley, Malley Way, whose name I always am still working on. He's involved in all of these technology projects. And we work very closely together with him and talk all the time about prioritizing projects and how we can ease things for students. And this nine-point-two upgrade was just so key and so, so critical to the things that we want to do next. And so this student, the Campus Solutions Module of the nine-point-two has all kinds of other enhancements that we will be assessing to see what we will continue to roll out to make better for students. We are also working with Antoine Malley Way on the Student Journey Mapping Loss Point Project. And this will be, the starting this summer, and it'll be completed this fall. All the campuses know that we have a student journey that is way more cumbersome than it should be, puts students through too much hassle, and we are attacking that full face so that we can know what it is we can do to make the student process much easier and smoother and with more support. And next slide is the online learning. And another time and place, we could look at this in person, but we had student-to-student support so that students could get the help they needed with Canvas. We increased the kind of twenty-four-seven access. Students can contact Canvas Support twenty-four hours, seven days a week to make sure that they know how to, you know, work Canvas. We have also increased, oh my goodness, so many LTIs that it, it made my head spin. We had to really get organized, but we have added a number of learning technology-integrated services, which are student services into the instructional side of Canvas so that you can properly pronounce someone's name in terms of ethnicity, so that you have tutoring that's online, so that you can check to make sure that there's integrity with papers, just a, a number of LTIs that we have added. And Sir Jana Toomey, who works in my office, really gets a lot of credit because with the pandemic, we just unrolled about twenty or so more. We're bringing on two more this summer. And all it does is make the experience for students better and make it a better teaching environment on, for online. And then last is MyPath. This has been integrated into a couple of the colleges. We're still working to unfold this. I put a check mark, but it really should be a half a check mark. We're still working on that, and this is a platform that eases and personalizes the application process. So you'll hear more about that as we fully roll that out. And the next slide is a thank you. I want to especially thank the Vice Presidents of Student Services and the Deans of Student Services. I work very, very closely with them. They work closely with each other. We meet and text constantly throughout the week, and it wouldn't be without that collaboration that happens from the district to the colleges, from IT to Student Services and beyond, to make all of this work happen. And of course, a special thank you to the students who voiced to us what it is they need to be successful in the Peralta Community College District. And that ends the presentation. And the Vice Presidents of Student Services and the Dean, as well as myself, are here for any questions or comments that you might have in more detail. Thank you for your time and attention. Thank you, Vice Chancellor Brown, and all of the Deans and Vice Presidents. That was truly phenomenal. Trustees, do I have, oh, I have a couple of questions. Trustee Kevin Jenkins and trustee Diana.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Brown and the rest of the people that presented. Question for you. In the anecdotal, anecdotal data surrounding the excuse withdrawals, was housing a big reason as to why our students are getting withdrawals?
It's a great question. It, it was not the largest factor. I don't have the actual percentage, but I'll tell you that the largest factor was, was health. The health of self and the health of family and having to take care of family. And then the second largest one was employment. And the loss of employment or the need to pick up additional employment to carry the household because someone else is now unemployed or underemployed. That's what we saw a lot. A lot of, of students tested positive for COVID. A, a lot of students were so stressed out and ain't full of anxiety around the pandemic. And, and, and they also expressed the challenges with, I just can't do chemistry online with the, with the, you know, an LTI called Lapster. And, and so those are the main ones. Housing, of course, is always an ingredient whenever you're talking about the economics of a household, but it wasn't voiced as, as often.
Okay. Are we keeping any data surrounding how many of our students are using our food distribution? I know it's a great resource for the community, but also how many of our students are using it?
Yes, we do keep data. The colleges keep that data, and I don't know if one of the vice presidents wants to share any, if they have it at the top of their, top of their mind. You heard President Besikov also give some numbers around food distribution. Any of the vice presidents have specific numbers on that?
At Laney College, I got the number today, actually, from our Food Services Director. He says they have served eighteen thousand two hundred students to date over this last year. So I'm sure some of those are duplicate numbers, but that they're kind of counting on the meals that were given every time students come.
Thank you. And we can provide a full report of that because I do know that the colleges all track it.
Okay. And last question, and you might not have the answer to this. In twenty seventeen, the board passed a Board Policy fifty-two twenty about shower usage for students that are unsheltered. Do you have any information on how many students are not, how many students are taking that up or how many students are using that?
Well, during the pandemic, of course, the campuses were closed, so there wouldn't be any data there. But I don't have any data on how many students have, have used, you know, the showers for those purposes prior to that. So I'd have to get back to you on that as well. And again, I'm not sure if any of the vice presidents have any, any information on that.
I can just say, I can't remember the data, to be honest, given we have, we've been closed for such a long period at the moment. But it was at College of Alameda minimally used. We did staff it during the hours that were published and that are in the board policy associated with the shower policy that we have and, or access. But it was really minimal at our college. I'm not sure about the other colleges specifically. We have data. I can pull it, you know, and give it to VC Brown as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Delphi Book?
Hi, yes, thank you very much for this, Dr. Brown. This has been very helpful in getting a full snapshot of Student Services, especially during this last year. So I have a couple of questions. So one, I know you mentioned earlier in your presentation about legal services for Dreamers. Can you speak a little bit more about the centralized nature of Student Services? I know that we have an undocumented student center at Berkeley City College, but is there any effort on the district's part to centralize that feature for undocumented students slash Dreamers?
What we do on the district level is not necessarily around the service to students, but around the tracking of students, the data side of it. So we don't have a centralized approach to it. The campuses, the, the Vice Presidents of Student Services, when we meet, we share best practices, what we're doing on our campuses, and exchange ideas and build programs based on what's working at one campus versus what's working at another campus.
Thank you. And then I have a little bit of a follow-up, because in general, it seems like a lot of these services are held. Thank you. And then I have a little bit of a follow up because in general, it seems like a lot of these services are held by campus, which, you know, kind of how things have been. Is there any effort just on a district level to centralize more student service? Not just necessarily legal services, but more student services? Because I, as I understand it, many of our students attend multiple campuses at once.
Okay, let me, I think I'm understanding where you're coming from. The district office doesn't see students, right? And I know you know that, but the students don't come to us. And so when we, from a district perspective, what we're doing is we're looking at a district wide approach to student services. And in order to do that, we, we come together and, and, and look at data, look at practices, et cetera, to see where we coordinate and where we overlap and, and make decisions collectively. So, so it wouldn't make sense for the district to say, we're going to start, you know, students come down to the district because we're going to do this program for you. That's not really how it works. Instead, my, a central part of my job, honestly, with the vice president of instruction and student services is to say, hold on you all, you know, you're doing this program, but the other three colleges aren't. Or this college wants this data or this, uh, this software package and the other colleges aren't talking about it. We need to talk together because of, just like you mentioned, the squirrel that's very high. So we make the decision collectively. So like, for example, the, the call center, the communication center. One college is trying it and then we roll it out after we see the impact. Or it was Vice President Shears from Berkeley City College that brought Maxient to us. I believe it was her. And, and Maxient is a whole platform around student conduct. So my role is to say, okay, let's talk about it all collectively because we can't unroll software to one college without it being all colleges. Or if a college is doing something innovative and we're seeing that the data is showing that is working. Hey, you all, how about this? An example of, of, of that would be Oakland Promise. We have worked in the last year to make sure that all of the colleges have assigned Oakland Promise counselors. So that when Oakland Promise students come, they actually have a counselor assigned to them. And that counselor is real knowledgeable about Oakland Promise and the programming is coordinated. So that's really the, the district role as opposed to.
Providing direct services. Yeah, I was looking for that, that answer about coordination because it just felt really siloed. So that, that actually answers my question.
Yeah. And, and that part is, that part is a really key part. And, and they would attest to the fact that I'm always harping on the squirrel rate.
Yeah.
That you can't do one thing, we've got to do it all. Because it's not in service to our students to, to, to do anything other than that. And it can be, it can be tempting to sort of get into what your college is doing. And I understand that, which is why we talk and come together all the time.
This is great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We have a few more questions. We have trustee Jalina. We have trustee Gonzalez Uwet.
Thank you. I, I want to just take a moment to appreciate and honor the work that, that you all have done as this big collaborative team, which is, which is fantastic. I also want to thank Dr. Jackson because I know she remembers almost a month ago, I said, so what are we going to do about this data integrity issue? Or what are we going to do? And you said, don't, they're working on it. They're working on it. It's coming. And so here it is. And I think it's, it's great. And Dr. Brown, you did a tie in on a number of things for me. So my brain is kind of just exploding all over the place with excitement. But one of the things you mentioned was, you know, from this EW kind of work that you're doing and figuring out kind of where some of these pain points are that are real for students. I mean, you talked about one of the higher issues or one of the rising issues was around employment. So, you know, just on, you know, economic instability and the fact that you all were able to hire. I think what I heard was about 10 students to engage in some of the work that you're doing with the outreach. So that was fantastic because it's such a great tie in. You also mentioned this accessible information management system, this AIM piece, which was a direct recommendation from CBT. That was nice. That was very nice. And, and I look at all of this because, you know, I, my reference point is CBT and FICMAT. Because this is where a lot of the recommendations stem from. And you all just did a fantastic job in tying in all of the pieces that are just critical on where we were, you know, where we had not been doing such a great job on, on figuring out what works for students. How do we make, you know, how do we just rise to the level to be able to meet students where they're at? And you all are doing it. So I just take my hat off to all of you, the entire team. So thank you so much. This is fantastic information. And just looking forward to receiving updates and seeing some of the other completed components of some of the information that you brought forward. So thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks to everyone.
Thank you, trustee Bonilla. Let's go to trustee Gonzalez Uwet.
Thank you. Gosh, what's so exciting and listening to it and impressive was just the, the kind of the range of initiatives. And what I can see is a lot of people having busy minds and administrators responding and saying, yes, 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 let's do that. And so that's very cool that trustee Bonilla used the word exploding mind with excitement. And, and that's how I'm feeling as I listen. And I just, you know, I know this stuff is happening, but hearing about details is very cool. Thank you. I've got three questions. They're a little related and some not. When you look at the data on success, class success and retention, frankly, it's pretty phenomenal. I mean, when you see, if you see 13% increase over five years, something is happening there.
Yeah.
If that data is real, something is happening there. And so part of what I'm trying to understand is what is happening there? What, what is it? You saw, let's say in one cohort, you're looking at, you know, in core success rates, black students 57% to 70%. Okay, that's pretty phenomenal. Was it all the way across the board, like all black students? Or was it particular learning approaches or approaches to student success where you could see like, wow, we doubled our retention there? Or we doubled our success? How are we understanding what's successful versus that was just a demographic trend? We had nothing to do with it?
Uh, it's a good question. It's always the question that, that anyone paying attention to data has to consider. And so to answer the first question, it's all students. It's not a tracking of a cohort for the data slides that I showed. It's all students. However, when we're talking about special populations, then they are, there, there are, there is cohort data. And so the reason that we know that, that our services are what is impacting the, the incline or the decline is because we're systematically following our enrollment management plans, where so much of this is, is listed out as what, what it is we're going to do. Setting data baselines and then following the data from there. And so of course, there can always be other underlying factors that might be impacting the data, like, like the pandemic, you know, right? We have such decreased enrollment. Well, it's not, it's not because we aren't doing what we've always been doing or more. It's because there are outside forces that we, we can't control. So we're, we always pay very close attention. And then you see like the, the larger population in the data. But on the campuses, they also are tracking smaller cohorts, for example, emoji. We, I had IR pull together all the emoji data, tracking, you know, from the very beginning at each college and presented it to the president so that they could look at, at, you know, how effective is your emoji? You know, this is a small set of students. There's like 30 in every cohort. You know exactly what you're offering in terms of services. Why is this program doing so much better than this program in terms of, in terms of a success or retention? And what attention is needed on your campus for that emoji or for that puente? So it's, 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 it's a combination of everything that you said. But, but ultimately, we know that it's, it's the work that's happening, which you've given, gotten a very small taste of, that's impacting the success. And I think last fall, when I presented the enrollment management report, I showed you how our completion rates are increasing as well. And so in spite of declining enrollment, there are these other indicators that we're doing very well at. And I don't want us to lose sight of that because it is about enrollment and it is also about completion.
So that's a nice segue to the second question that I had. And that is, when you look at the success and retention data, that looks pretty good, but not so good in the persistence area.
Yeah.
In some, it's like, what's going on that we're not doing very well at persistence? Because that's where we're also really impacting, being impacted on enrollment. If we could keep, I mean, like, look, if you have persistence rates of 65%, that means you're losing 35% of the students you just got in the door. You've got to replace those before you can grow.
Yeah.
So what's going on with the persistence that we're not doing so well as compared with those other things? And then the last question, I'll just throw in and you might respond to this because it has to do with sort of funding questions. You mentioned the automatic degree granting, which will help in some of the SCIF areas. There are other SCIF metrics where we're not doing as well as we could and we're, you know, so it's not just the enrollment where we're falling off that fiscal cliff when we lose the hold harmless. It's also some other metrics. Are we tracking those things specifically and saying, wait, this is part of where our dollars go? We need to track that and figure out how do we improve those areas? Whether they're good for students or not, hopefully they would be. Our bottom line is fed by those and we need to pay attention to them. It, it's stupid way of thinking, but it's, that's part of the way we have to think.
At all. It's actually exactly what we're paying attention to. When we knew that the SCIF was coming, you know, to us, we started pulling that data so that we could track that data. We use the SCIF metrics for our enrollment management plans, college and district as well. And, and we continue to track it. So just like you said, there are some areas we're doing really well. Doing enrollment, you know, straight up. Some of these other areas up, going uphill. But, but there's a few things that we have to do that are really critical. Of course, it's the increasing enrollment, obviously. But it's also that data integrity project that was so, so incredibly useful and helpful to all of us that we are focusing on. And the financial aid Pell Grant aspects of that. And the fact that by the time that we're implementing that data integrity project, that you will see some of those numbers just automatically increase. And of course, we will track that and be able to report that to you all. And, and be able to track it over the next few years. That's kind of low hanging fruit, you know, is just getting everybody on par with that. And then in terms of persistence, there is, the Vice President Vasconcellos just talked about an example. Students dropping out in the semester and then using the high touch approach to ask them to come back. That is so, so significant to students. It means I care, someone cares about me. And it does result in students coming back. But I'd like to ask Vice President Vasconcellos to talk about how they're focusing on persistence. So you can get an example.
Sure. And this is such a timely conversation. I just held a face to face retreat for my management team today at my house. And this is what we discussed the entire afternoon was around looking at, we did a data dive, looking at what was our persistence in part data and success and so forth. And then really looking at what are the high touch, you know, high service interventions that we've done over this past year in our remote and online world and serving students. And then looking at, you know, can we see a correlation or not? It's really, really hard this year and this year plus, looking at, there's so many intervening variables, as you know, just because of what's happening in the world around us right now. This is a little bit harder right now, but we're really looking at strategically implementing and continuing to run some of the things like the call center, for instance, or the communication hub that I'm shifting to call it, is really going to gear up and do more of those, you know, reach out to students through text and even where we sort of reach out to you. So, you know, we text you and we say, you know, how are you doing? Just want to check in with you. Would you like a counseling appointment? We see that, you know, we're midway through the semester and you can text back yes to us or why to us. And then we can then, you know, quickly go ahead and set up an appointment for you. So there's several things that we talked about today that we're going to be implementing next year. And then just expanding on what we've been trying to do already. I don't think we're going to have really super solid data without all of the extraneous influences that we've had this year plus until, you know, unfortunately, until fall 2022, you know, that year, hopefully when we're fully, fully back. But, um, but I do, I mean, I just want you to know, we are conscious about this. You know, I talk about it with my team all the time. We talk about it with the vice presidents across the district and with Siri as well. Or Vice Chancellor Brown and even across with the VPIS and the VPSSs, we're looking at this. That's what keeps us up at 3:00 AM.
Thank you. And I don't want to keep you to 3:00 AM, even though I have that much, that many thoughts. I'm going to hand this back to Cindy. Thank you.
And I, I don't see any other hands. And I just want to make a couple of different comments. I have to say that this is probably the most exciting part of the meeting. I mean, it really is. It's always the most exciting part of the meeting. Because this is why we're here and we'll hear what's going on with the students at the colleges and hearing from all the vice presidents. I have to tell you, it helps kind of affirm why we're all doing what we're doing. So it's really pretty fabulous. I, my, my comment is that it's, it's so invaluable to see the incredible power of high touch, right? And to be able to see the outcomes and results pretty immediately of our interventions for all of our students, but particularly our special populations. I, I loved hearing about the first year experience, about calling the students, the number of students that we have fed, as well as the, the live chat, all of those different ideas, as Jalina had said. So exciting and so incredibly important. Here's a question for you. In terms of the technology and in terms of all of the modules that we've implemented, I know that we've talked about this many a time, and this might actually be a question for, for the chancellor, in addition to Vice Chancellor Brown. A survey, a survey to the students so that what we think we're doing and how it's actually coming across to the students when they're interfacing it would be a great way to close any other gaps in terms of what we believe we're offering a service to our students and how students are really experiencing it. So not sure, not sure if, whether or not that's something that we've done or are planning to do, but would love to hear.
It is something that we've done and, and do and will continue to do. When the pandemic hit, we immediately did a survey about needs, basic needs. And that's how we came up with, we literally took those survey results in, in chancellor's cabinet and looked at the first allocation of the CARES block grant and utilized the data to help inform how we would allocate those funds. Students spoke to us. The colleges also do the, oh, I know what this is called, the.
Sessies.
Sessie, thank you for the Sessie survey, which I love that survey. Thank you, President Garcia. The Sessie survey, which asks a host of questions that are standardized and the colleges can add their own questions and ask them everything about financial aid and student services. And those are also used to inform how do, how do I make service at financial aid better? We, we are going to, we did a survey this past fall, this past like November, that was about all those LTIs that I mentioned, the learning technology integration systems that we did for Canvas. This survey was to faculty and it was asking them all the same kinds of questions about, is this working? Are you using it? Et cetera, et cetera. And we used that survey, we got a really high response rate. And we use that survey along with usage, data usage reports from those LTIs to inform the stack that's due to the state in next week. And that's, in other words, we don't want to use the HERF2 funds on just, you know, we're just grabbing all these LTIs. We're grabbing all these, all the software out there. No, we're using data to make the decision so that we use the money in a way that makes the most sense in terms of student success and quality teaching. Quality teaching is student success as well. And so that's why I'm, even though I'm talking about a faculty survey, it's because we're thinking about the students at the end of the day. So I, I do feel that we're just, that we're really good at like coming together and systematically looking at these things. It's not haphazard. It is a strength that we all. It's not haphazard. It is a strength that we all work together really closely and really well, presidents, administration. We take it to this faculty senate, the DOS, I'm at every single meeting, you know, to make sure that we're all giving input and thinking through. The ways we need to improve. We have a lot of work to do without a doubt. But I'm happy to be able to be here tonight with my colleagues to show you that we are not sitting on our hands and we have not been. And we will continue to work as hard as we have been to innovate and innovate and reach our students. Until we can say we have 100% completion rates and our persistence weights rates went up 15%. And, you know, all those great numbers that just encourage the work that we all do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Thank you, Deans. Thank you, Vice President Vasconcellos. Fantastic report. These are, I wish you could end the meeting right now because. Just your your energy and your enthusiasm speaks volumes to the quality. Services and the staff that we have interfacing with our students. So thank you all so much.
Thank you. So now we are going to move a little bit further forward, except. I'm going to give, there's one particular item that needs to be dealt with. I'm going to give that to Natasha. It's 5.5 before we go to consent.
Thank you, President Reese. Good evening, trustees and Chancellor Jackson. We have a correction to make on the consent agenda. Item 5.5, we got a bit ahead of ourselves. This is the sunshine proposal, which is part of a two step process. At tonight's meeting, the purpose of this item is to just provide a presentation of it to the public. It begins a comment period. And then at the next meeting, we will ask you to receive public comment on it. And then accept it. But it but we didn't, we didn't mean to put it in the consent agenda. So if I could turn it to Dr. McKinley, he will walk the board and the public through the sunshine item.
Yeah, thank you, Natasha, and good evening, President Reese, trustees and President Chancellor Jackson. So pursuant to California Code Section 3547. The the district is sunshining its initial proposals for negotiation with its three bargaining units. And those are SEIU Local 1021, International Union of Operating Engineers Local 39, and the. Peralta Federation of Teachers. In addition to the our initial proposals, we're also sunshining at the request of SEIU 1021. Their sons, their initial proposals for negotiation. And as the councilor said, in the next meeting, we'll be, of course, inviting public comment. In the next meeting and then asking the recommending action by the board on the sunshine proposals. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Now let's move on to the consent calendar. Can I have a motion for the consent calendar?
So moved.
Thank you, trustee Jalina. Can I have a second? May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez Uwet. Discussion?
Yes, Madam President.
Discussion. Yes.
So. To be consistent, I think on that last item, this is a formality, but the recommended action. Is approval. And I think that we need to amend the item to say, no action at this time informational only. So to strike the the recommend approval under evaluation and recommended action.
Yes, thank you. That's that's exactly right, Vice President Gonzalez Uwet.
So I would just make a motion that we amend that item and ask the. Maker of this motion to approve to accept that as an amendment. That's huge, Lena.
I thought so. Yes.
Thank you. Okay, I know that was just a formality, but I thought it needed doing. Thank you.
You're always so good at getting us exactly right, Nikki. Okay, so let us do roll call, please.
Trustee Whitro.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphin Pope.
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Uwet.
Yes.
Trustee Napoli Valeris.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And now we are at our action item, 7.1. California Community Colleges 323 Estimated Enrollment E-Rubbing Report.
So moved.
Thank you. Second.
I'll second this.
Thank you. Discussion? Okay, roll call.
The Chancellor, just two sentences. What is this item? Why is it important? What are you telling us?
On this particular item, this is the. Advocacy group that we have been working with. This, am I on the right one? I just want to make sure.
No, we're on 7.1.
7.1.
323 Enrollment Report.
Oh, the enrollment report. That is a report that is. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I had stepped out for a minute and I I came back and I I have to read, pull my agenda up.
Take your time, Chancellor.
Thank you.
Just take a moment, breathe. You'll be fine.
I would ask that President.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, 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 I was.
In advance to be ready for that question. My apologies.
Not a problem at all, trustee Uwet. This is with Merritt College and Merritt College and President Johnson. This was an item for you. Do you want to speak to that? President Johnson.
Yeah, I'm thinking.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot either, but I just, I I stepped out and I don't have my notes in front of me.
I think.
7.1 is the as the 323 report, Chancellor.
That's submitted by the district, I believe, right?
Yeah, it's the presentation that I that I that you asked me to put together and I put up there.
Oh, okay. Well, Dr. Brown.
This is short. I won't walk through the slides. The 323 report is required by ED Code 76300. And we are required to report on the fees that are owed and the fees that have been collected. And the total fees to the state. And the reason we do that is because of another ED Code 84751. Where they where the state removes 98% of the fees we've collected from our allocation. So the dates that that we submitted are aligned with the P1 and the P2. And then when Vice Chancellor Ahmed submits the 311 report, those numbers have to line up with what's in the 323. So that that's essentially what it what it is.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Brown. Thank you, everybody, actually, the village. All right, shall we vote on this? Yes, roll call, please.
Trustee Whitro.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphin Pope.
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Uwet.
Yes.
Trustee Napoli Valeris.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And that brings us to 8.1, Word of Trustees Reports. Trustee Whitro.
Pass on that. Thanks.
Of course, trustee Jenkins.
Pass. Thank you.
Trustee Delphin Pope.
Yes, I'll keep it brief. Thank you very much to everybody who came to the first annual Peralta Colleges Latinx Graduation Ceremony. It was amazing. And I want to give a special shout out to Martín and to Horacio, who were the ones who helped organize it, as well as Carolina from BCC. So it was a definite labor of love for all of us who are involved. And so I was very honored to be able to speak and say a few words to our graduates, as well as the four college presidents who all attended. Thank you very much for your support. And lastly, to Dr. Jackson, who also offered some words of encouragement and recognition for the Latinx excellence that we have here at Peralta. It was a great, great thing to see. And it's the first of many. So thank you very much to all who are involved.
Delphin Pope. Trustee Handy.
No.
Trustee Bonilla.
I'll pass. Thank you.
Okay, trustee Gonzalez Uwet.
Just a thanks to everybody involved in tonight's meeting for such a thoughtful and engaging. Reminder of why we're here and demonstration of the competence and passion. That you bring to your jobs as educators. Thank you.
Thank you. And and just lastly, this is a big week for for us all. As you all will be going to the commission to present right before the meeting. So good luck. Show them the work and passion that this district most definitively has and that all of you certainly have. And that's it. I think that we will move on to announcements, if there are any announcements. Vice Vice President Gonzalez.
Gosh, caught me unawares again. Okay.
You may need a second.
Sasha, I'm going to need a second. Did you send me an announcement?
I did. Let me find it one more time.
I was gonna.
I'm sorry. There we go. I got it.
I was gonna say, trustee Uwet, that turnabout is fair play.
Yeah, except. I actually was given notice and I. Enrollment is open for both summer and fall 2021 semesters. Summer classes start June 14th, so get going and roll now. Next board meeting is on June 22, 2021. And I think that's right around time of the solstice. So enjoy the end of the spring. That's it.
Wonderful. Everyone have a wonderful, wonderful evening. And with that, let us adjourn the meeting. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.